Okay, I got the high sign from Catherine. So we're gonna have a couple of meetings tonight. We first have a public hearing and then we have our regular meeting. So welcome to this public hearing in the Harlan Community School District. Welcome Board members. Thank you all for being here. So we have a good quorum and some, and thank you administrators and guests. We appreciate everybody being here. And so we're gonna start here on the first item here. Call the meeting to order and determine a quorum, which we have accomplished. And number two is to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda? The wives will take a motion on it.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second and Roger and Gray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we have the presentation of the 2024-2025 school calendar along with the comments from the public. And I believe we don't, unless we have anyone who wants to comment, we will go on from here. Very good, okay. Next, we have adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to approve the calendar?
No, that's in our next meeting. This was just public.
This was just public comment.
Just if somebody wants to say anything.
If we want to say anything, should we say it now or later?
I would wait till the board meeting.
Okay, sorry, I shouldn't be there. So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Very good, we got one meeting done. We're two minutes after. Now can we start the next meeting, Catherine?
Yeah.
We have to wait till 5:05 like it says?
No.
Okay, so we're okay to start the second meeting. So this is the regular meeting of the school. And here we again call the meeting to order and note that we do have a quorum with all members being here. And as far as the public forum, Catherine has said that no one has requested to speak to the board tonight. So we can move on to item C and take a look at the agenda and ask if there's any comments or if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
So moved by Gray and seconded by Al. And so we're on to item D, discussion items. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent Barnett.
Okay, we have two different presentations today. So Kylie, do you wanna go first tonight?
Sure.
And then, so I'll pull yours up.
So you guys may have noticed that there's been a lot more activity on the social media accounts that we've been having, all with Facebook, Twitter, X, and then also on Instagram. So we have had a student-led focus on that. And so I'm gonna kinda walk you through what we're doing here and kind of what our next steps look like with our social media and our student-led content. So we use a platform called Class Intercom. And so this specific platform allows our students to create content and then post to Class Intercom. That way, it cuts out the middleman. So the students make the posts that they need, whether that's a new event posting, something that's happening in class, and then an admin approves it. And so they put it right on the platform and it pushes out. Right now, we have students in an authentic learning classroom that are making content with myself. We had some students in a win time and after-school making content too, but a large amount of our content is also coming from our advanced marketing students with Mrs. Sturman and then Dylan Sears is our sub right now. So those students are dividing and conquering the content, making sure they're going through the bound calendar. Our teachers reach out with content that's happening in their classrooms. So either the teachers are taking their own photos and sharing them out to the students to kinda make their stories, or the students are actually going in and capturing them for them. So they create and schedule the platform. And so you can schedule into the future. So if they wanna make all of their posts for the week, they can go through and they can schedule exactly what time it goes out. So you'll notice that a lot of posts go out between 6:00 AM and 8:00 AM. A student is not up at 6:00 AM posting them. They have scheduled them the days before. So this program has allowed us to go to a couple different brands. So if you wanna hit my next slide. It's total ease of use. So like I said before, this is what our students see on the platform. They can schedule. So you can see all the way from the left corner, they have a draft. This is content that they're working on. We have what's called a library. So the example that you have here with this basketball game day, it's just a blank document. When they're ready to put maybe the scores or a specific date on there, they go to the library and they can type right over that. So all of our no school or snow day or anything like that, all that content is pre-created and is sitting there, ready to use when the time comes. Also, you're gonna see that there's a pending. That would be a student made the post, they're ready to push it out, and they're just waiting for somebody to approve it. And so myself and a couple of other admins or teachers can approve it and it moves over to the approved file. There is where all of the scheduled posts sit. So you can see there's a couple promoting our theater. Those are gonna go out over the next couple of months. All of our published and then all of our canceled. So if something happens, for example, we already had scheduled posts go out on snow days, so a couple of them got out. So we had to go back and cancel those and update those with snow day information and that kinda stuff. So the nice thing about the platform is it has a lot of back features for us. We can get reports on all of our data as far as like what's been successful, how many people are engaging with our posts, the locations of the towns of people that are looking at our posts. And then we can also divide it up and tag it by the activity. So we can see how many posts are made for basketball, we can see how many are made for music, elementary, high school, all of that. So we can go back and refer to that and then also start to see when is the best time to post, where should we be posting, all of that kinda stuff. So those are features that we will use and dive into with our students, but we're still kinda in the baby stages of this. So all our pre-made content is in our libraries. And then at the top, you can see this one is specifically for Harlan Community Activities, but we have brands for all of our districts pages. So we have a district page, we have an elementary page, middle school, high school, and then an activities. That way, we can kinda divide the content as we go. If you wanna hit that next slide. So right now, we have a couple of student leaders. These student leaders are specifically for the high school, middle school, and elementary. So if any of our teachers in those specific buildings have questions or have stuff that needs to be generated, they can reach out to those students. Those are not the only students making content, but those are our building-specific leaders for this semester. There were some different ones for last semester. So these are our contacts and they are also the ones that kinda help arrange if photos need to be taken or specific times that content needs to go out. On the table, you guys all see a half-sheet flyer. We actually pushed these half-sheet flyers out to all of our students in our district. There was some for high school, so the ones you're seeing are high school-specific, but we also had them for middle school and elementary. And we sent those out just to keep everybody kinda in the know of what's going on. So each of the flyers, regardless of the building, has the specific graphic that you can see with like the profile photo. One thing that I saw is that there needed to be some unity that goes with it. And then that way, people in the public know that this is specifically to our school. So if there's any fake accounts or anything like that, we know that this graphic is the one. So just ease of use for people that are joining. So all of the handles, whether it's for X or Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram are on there. There's also promotions for our activities page and then also for our district page. So these are available if people move into the district, people have questions. All of the offices have extra copies of these. You'll also see we have them posted by all of our gyms. So when people come in, they can also see and start to follow those handles that we have. We also have added one more platform. It's for our authentic learning platform. We have a student that's actually starting to run two different businesses, social medias as part of their class. So they're collaborating with those businesses, talking about the content, looking at branding, and then gonna use this platform to push out those posts for the business. So that's something that we're gonna continue to grow into next year or next semester with hopes that that leads to job opportunities, resume building, all of that. And it's just a safe way with the company. Those businesses can upload their like login information. So myself, the school, students, they don't actually have to deal with the business's login information and it's monitored before that information goes out onto their platform. So what we found is that there's been a high engagement and growth in the membership on all of our platforms. There has been a plateau at the district level, but that's because we've been distributing the content to all of the pages. So one thing that we'll see with the content is if we posted all of the posts that we make every week on one avenue, we would lose people because it would just be way too much content. There might be elementary parents that don't care about the high school or vice versa. So we have distributed that content so that we can narrow it down to the people who specifically wanna see it. So that's one thing that we have to continue to grow, just making sure that everybody knows that you can follow the elementary, middle school, high school district page. And then we've kinda made guidelines like any district announcements are always going on the district page. Anything that's happening in the high school is going out on the high school page, but we can share it to the district page so those people are seeing those types of things. So we're kinda distributing that as we go. And then our reports can be, like I mentioned earlier, very specific to the content and the creation. And so on the next slide, I have a couple of examples. So this is what our students can see with our reports. So we can go, this is data from January. We can see how many people engaged on each day and with each post. And this is only specifically to the district page. We can look at this data for the elementary, the middle school, the high school, and the activities page. And then on the next slide, this is very digging deeper into our data, but on the district page in January, we made 45 total posts. 1,800 people saw them, there was 2,500 comments, and 2,100 people shared the content that we have out there. So we can also see specifically for each post. So our most engaged post was a snow day post back in January. 277 people liked it, 90 people shared it, but 13,000 people interacted with it. And so that's way larger than what we have for followers, but that just shows that from the interaction that we have and the algorithm and all that stuff, that our posts are being generated and seen by more than just who is following us. And then if you look, these are our up-to-date totals. So the only really established page we had prior to using Class Intercom was our Facebook page. So it has 2,500 followers. The rest is pretty much grown since we started in about October. So each page specifically needs to have over 100 followers on it to get really deep-dive data. So now we've reached that and all of them except for the elementary school. So we can continue to track and see how that grows. We can look at our data all the way back from the first day that we had the platform. So we can compare next year, month to month. Students can look back and see what posts were successful from the year before. So as we collect more data, they'll be able to use it more in-depth. And then, so outcomes that we've had, since we've started, we have a student that's been running media days. They're already starting to schedule our media days for the spring. So they contact teachers, they get students lined up, they have their vision, they use the green screen, they do all of that kinda stuff to find their content. Our advanced marketing students and yearbook students have made stock photos and with those stock photos, it might be teachers teaching, students learning, people in the hallways interacting. We've started to use those for some branding. And so we've made infographics. They're currently on a crunch to get a hype day video made for state basketball. So they're working with the basketball team to get that done before Friday. And then like I mentioned earlier, we have a student working with two businesses, which has also allowed us to have a new class. And then working with our business partners, we already have some other businesses identified for next year that also want some social media or maybe even website development done so that everybody can have a chance to work and kinda build their resume that way. And then if you hit the next one, this is our next step. So this is almost finished. It's our branding kit. Not only will we use this with our students, but it's something that we're using construction-wise and poster-wise for the new buildings. We have specific fonts identified, the color palettes, and then the logos that we're gonna use so that it's kinda unified. And you can see that the images that are here, these are the stock images that our students captured that we can use on our informational flyers and websites and that kinda stuff. So we have that already and made, and so we'll continue to use that and grow that as the needs come up. So that's what we have been doing with our social media.
Love it.
Kylie has done this in about six months. So we just need, we've done an awesome job. And the kids, the kids are doing a good, a great job too, but you're the leader of all that, so we appreciate that.
What's the cost with Class Intercom?
Um, I think it's $500 per building, $350 per building.
Per year?
Per year.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
But then you're paying probably for Canva and other things?
No, Canvas free for education.
For education, okay.
So they get the, the students get premium with a teacher in them. So we have teams of that. And then in Canva, we have our brand set up. So all of the kids know exactly what colors, they'll have the logos in place so we can do, or we can pull those. The advanced marketing students started to pull like our conference teams and stuff like that to get their logos, to grow them too. So everyone's using all of that type of content.
What else do they use besides Canva?
A couple of our students have used Adobe. And then we have access to that through the AEA, so that's still no cost to the district.
Okay. So Photoshop or My House too?
Yeah, Photoshop and then like Adobe Spark.
Oh, it's up in there.
Cause I've seen where they've done the deep dive, you know, but usually that's through like a Facebook or a, you know, they're doing that, or Google or something like that. But this is a separate program that will, software platform that will take care of that.
Yep, and it pulls from Meta. So it's the same data that you would see if you went into your like Meta marketplace or what's it called, Meta Home Hub thing. But that way, we don't have to give access to our Meta to our students. They can see it right off of those reports. So like I said, a couple of them, we didn't have reports on until probably this last month because we didn't have over 100 followers. But now that we have that, we can track all of that deep dive data. And I would say even Class Intercom probably pulls more in a more visual, user-friendly version than if we did let our students get into the Meta and see kinda the posts that they have, so.
You started it out by talking about student-led being in this, so that they create the stuff. And then there's a moderator or admin that goes through that's you or?
Um, myself, Dylan, Casey, Anthony, all of us double-check it. That way, they don't have free rein to our social media.
So it goes through some filtering system?
Yeah, it's a filtering system, yep, yep.
Usually it's typos.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
How are you selecting the businesses that you're working with?
Um, we had to reach out beforehand, so we just started with them. Hopefully, next year, depending on how many students are in the authentic learning, it'll kinda be the businesses presenting to the students and them deciding who they wanna take on, if it's something of interest to them and that kinda stuff. And then hopefully, with the businesses we already have in place, it might be continuing on. Our student that's doing it right now is an underclassman, so she'll be here for multiple years to kinda help with that too.
And Iowa Western has also announced, next year, they're offering a certification in social media. So students can take Iowa Western classes and end with a certification in social media. This coming year, it's sports media technology certification. So they'll rock those back and forth. Next year will be sports media technology, the following year will be social media. So as a junior, you can get one, and as a senior, you can get the other. Yeah, and that pulls from a totally different cohort, interest group than like our welding and auto diesel technology kids. So it's really neat.
And I really like the branding aspect that we're using and we're consistent throughout. I think that's important.
Yeah, and the font that was chosen is like it's available in Canva, Google Docs, Microsoft, so it's not different for each one. Took a lo, a long time, but we found it. And then Class Intercom actually has a bunch of data and studies and information that they share out to us as instructors too, on what other schools are doing, how they're doing it, what's it look like. So it's kind of a collaborative environment in that way. They're used across the US, they're based out of Lincoln, Nebraska. And so they had, we sent students, I think 10 students in October to a student-led content workshop. So they had speakers come in, they had a TikTok star that was there talking about how they got to where they're at, and then what other schools are doing for blogs or podcasts or anything like that, that could be the next steps in that. But their motto is if the students don't tell the story, somebody else is gonna tell it. And sometimes the perceptions of the students and teachers or people in the community can be different. So if you're telling it or capturing the photos, then you're sharing what it looks like, so.
And we did work with the architects and the design team on the branding too. So all the new construction, that was a collaborative. So that's kinda new too, good for the kids to see how everything just goes together.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some updated stuff on the front of the building when we go to high school.
Yep, we will, with that font. That's what, yep, all that font will be in your front.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Hey, Anthony's got some numbers for us.
Not real close to me.
Hi, guys. I haven't seen you in a second. So Dr. Barnett wanted me to share with you guys just some of the numbers and just some of, so some of the numbers make sense for you. So we have an enrollment of roughly 487. And we were joking over there, 244 males, 243 females. Wouldn't we like that every single year? So it's just about even. So some of these, football was wrong. I was about 22 off of that because that didn't include the freshman teams. So we're sitting a little bit higher there. So the percentage of those would be like 23% of the boy population is out for sports or volleyball. You've got 13. It's hard for me to kinda say because we have a lot of kids that are involved in multiple things. So it's hard for me to gather like 90% of Harlan is involved in something because we share a lot of the same kids and I don't wanna give you percentages that aren't real. So I can tell you what percentage are out for that specific sport or activity. Middle school, Bill kinda shared those numbers with you. We've got a large group of football players and volleyball players coming up, which is great to see. Our winter seasons, you can see we've got some kids involved in a lot of different things. That's the one thing I love about this is we offer so many things at Harlan that you can be involved in a lot of different things. So we've got girls' basketball, boys' wrestling. The girls' wrestling, we have five out, but we have more coming up. That is something that is absolutely gonna blow up in the next two or three years. I think we would have always sat at about three to five girls' wrestlers here if we would have had to continue to share them and send them. Now that it's a home base, the buzz around girls' wrestling right now is pretty cool. So we've got about five, I would say, in the middle school is out of the 20, would you say that? About five girls' wrestlers. So it's gonna start to move up and I think that's gonna be something big with girls' wrestling. We have purchased with the youth wrestling club, the booster club, and ourselves, three new wrestling mats. So that will be really cool for next year as we look at that Dan Hill Wrestling Tournament, our big tournament. That next year, I hope, is that it will be a girls' and boys' wrestling meet, which will make this huge. So we would have the girls down in the middle school while we ran the boys up at high school and it would just create like a mega tournament up here, which would be really, really cool. So we've got, excuse me, some middle school. I've got the awards and some of the cool stuff that we had going on. You know, we made it to playoffs in football and Lindsey Sonderman, can we say enough about her and her cross-country? We qualified quite a bit for wrestling. Girls' wrestling was the first season. Ivy Stevens qualified for bowling, boys' basketball. We're hoping, right, tonight that they get a win over Creston and then how about that girls' basketball game the other day? Anybody else shaking after that? That was, that was cool. So, and then getting, go ahead.
Slightly.
So getting into some of the other activities, band, our numbers are massive. And I wanted to share one of the, what Bill had shared with me, I couldn't get this on. Bill, was that Glenwood today? So he shared in text, I didn't have time to share this. But he said, "It's been a productive season for the Harlan Jazz Bands. The Jazz Ensemble placed first in the second band category at the Simpson Jazz Festival. The Jazz Experience placed first in the Simpson Jazz Festival, first in the Morningside Jazz Festival, and hopefully first in the Dick Bauman District Jazz Festival." They will announce awards at 4:45 today. He was gonna let me know. And then by placing first at districts, the Jazz Experience will automatically qualify for the Iowa Jazz Championships in April. So I'll learn that. It's just amazing that first, 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 and we banner, banner, banner in all of our stuff. So choir, Daniel Navatney shared, we've got a lot of kids out for choir. Chloe Hall and Emily Hocken made Allstate Choir. He also had six students selected to sing at the, I'm gonna butcher this, Meister Singer Honor Choir. Did I say that right? Awesome. So again, amazing stuff going on there. So, and then the amount of clubs. It's hard for me to keep track of all of them, but you know, we have speech and theater and drama, STUCO, FCCLA, BPA, HOSA, Foreign Language Club.
They're at State BPA right now.
Yeah, they are. Swanson's up there right now.
Worst restaurant we've ever had.
That is amazing. So Best Buddies, FFA, that 94, it's actually 125, seven through 12 in FFA. So a large group out for FFA, which as we all know is amazing. So we've got robotics, that's Kylie. Also, she is amazing. Every time I can say that Kylie's amazing, she's amazing. So, and then Science Club, and we have Mock Trial. So that's awesome stuff. And I wanted to, on the back, I said, "I just wanna thank you all again." I used the F-word, fun. I'm having more fun than I've ever had in 12, 13 years now in education. My job, as I tell the coaches all the time, is to just make sure when you go out there, you can coach, you can teach, and you don't have to worry about anything other than those things. So I think up to this point, I've done a fairly okay job at making sure that it's just all ready for everything that they need. They don't have to, you know, and I don't want Zach Claussen to get done with that game and go, "Oh, man, do I need to book hotel rooms?" They're done. They're taken care of, I got you. So, and those are the great things. My, my, the worst part of my job is booking hotel rooms for state basketball. That is great. So, and then I talked to you about some of the new things that I'm working on, those wrestling mats, those senior playing cards were kind of a cool, big thing for those seniors. We're gonna do that for every sport from here on out. So seniors will get little, whether they're baseball training cards or football. I've been working with Jade Osborne on that and we're talking about actually packaging the team so you get the packaged team cards. And then for me, I was like, "Oh, that's cool because as a parent, I'll want two. I'll want one I can open and one I'll want sealed and then I can make a little bit more money." So that was cool. Activity scheduling, constantly, there you go. Constantly working, making sure that the fine arts and the sports programs are always well-represented on both sides. Jade and I are actually meeting tomorrow, right, to work on, say the word again, our, what was the word that we used? The plan, strategic plan. That's the word I wanted to use to make sure that we have our three-year, five-year, 10-year outlook for purchasing for fine arts, making sure that's aligned. And just making sure, like I said, that our sports, as we get into the spring season, it's gonna be wild and we've got a lot of things going on. Let's pray for no more snow days or rain delays or anything like that. So, do you have any comments or come support our girls and our boys tonight?
Oh, yeah, by sound.
Did he actually sign this or is this?
Yeah.
Well, that's his horrible signature.
But it's part of it?
We had the boys.
No, they signed it, yep. They stand up for the sign.
We had a autograph, so. Yeah, I will do this. I'd like to do this one more time at the end of the season so we can wrap up what our numbers look like at the back, at the back end. But doors always open, always stop in. It's nice to kinda chat with you guys.
Is there any information from prior years?
On numbers?
Yes.
I can do that at the end of the year, kinda compare it to what it's looked like.
Yeah, I was just wondering like if you go back five years or, I mean, not that you gotta go each year, but I'm just, just curious.
It's gonna be down and that's our goal, right, is making sure that they aren't down. Me and the, or the coaches and I consistently talk, and sponsors, just what makes a kid wanna put the work in anymore when I can go. And it's not even bad stuff anymore, it's just I'd rather work or I'd rather, there's a lot of things available for kids outside of, well, my buddies are out for football, so I might as well because otherwise dad's gonna make me work on the farm. It's kinda different now. So you've gotta make it fun, but at the same time rewarding and tough. I think we have to keep our level of excellence up here, but make sure it's fun for them as well, so. It's our goal.
I think we have that. I think we have that. I know at least in the couple of years I've been here that Davis did a reward as well.
Perfect.
So we find that for you.
Yeah, we have that.
And thank you, Anthony. You're new to this year and you've done an amazing job. So we.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate your energy for sure.
Yeah, we definitely do. I've got that positive.
So if you see my son out there, it's mimicked up there.
Very good. Item two, facility update.
We don't have too much of a facility update. There's a, there's a couple of change orders or a change order in here that we'll approve. The steel is going up at the elementary, so that's exciting and you can really see now where that building is. Auditorium's being used quite often, so that's fun too. We're working with music boosters. One of the things, they gave a generous donation and one of the things is to get TVs out and in different classrooms. So in the art room, the music room, and the band room, just so that you can see what's going on on the stage and off the stage. So we're working on that right now. And just, we want to order the same size and the same TVs that we're going to get all the way around the whole school. So we're, and we have a possible another donor for that as well. So we're excited to get that moving. Yeah, nothing else really too crazy with the facilities right now. Still working on finalizing the plans for the safety of us to Buell and the bids will go out in March for that with the hopes of starting construction in that in May if we get the right, the right numbers on the bids.
Pilot furniture came last, last week. There's a pilot classroom in the elementary and the high school with, we cleared it out of our furniture and then they brought in and set it up with the furniture that we're looking to purchase for like a general classroom. So I went and looked at it today. It's nice. The high school's nice.
Try it out.
Try this too, yeah.
And get feedback. Is there enough storage? Is there not enough storage? Do you think the kids will like these or not? So, yeah.
So the progress and the cost is pretty much on target?
We're on target. Yeah, we're on target.
Nice. We want to hear.
Right?
Very good then. Item three, student accolades.
All right, Mr. Mojer.
Okay, so we got Micah as our, one of our citizens of the week. I have to boot him out. He's taller than I am now. That's a rule I have at the elementary school. If you get taller than me in the elementary, you're gone. You're built.
So you're not going to ever apply for the middle school job?
No. I can barely hang on for a minute.
Sorry.
That's why my, my office got moved to the primary.
We're going to have to move the fifth graders up.
We are. In the middle there, we've got, let's see, Gus and Carson and Easton and Ms. Shabon. So one thing that that's new this year, we've been kings and queens of the keyboarding. So keyboarding skills, what we've noticed is once kids start using phones like they have been more and more, they come to us with terrible keyboarding skills because of the way their thumbs are, they're thumbing it. So we've had, we used to do this starting in fifth grade and fourth grade, but now we're starting it in second, trying to beat the bad habit. So what we've been doing is we ordered these crowns and every grade level has a king and queen. Every classroom either has a king or queen once a week, second through fifth grade. So, and we're having a tournament. We're having a 60-14 bracket coming up here in March. We're having a little March Madness for keyboarding. So excited about that. Upper right hand there, they're using B-bots. Those are oldies but goodies. They've been around for a long time, but it's basic programming. So it's STEM information. And then bottom right, oh, we did a bingo, I don't know, you guys, some of you are elementary kids. We did a bingo over a reading bingo. We're trying to get more reading at home. We did a reading bingo where you can have a blackout and if you completed that and you brought it back, you get your name on a drawing. And then we drew names out of anyone that brought their bingo card back. So one day over Christmas break, you had an activity you were supposed to do. So we were at Pizza Ranch. So that was the reward there. Man, you can't believe the, that's a big, getting to go to Pizza Ranch is a big deal. So anyway, one thing that's not on here that I will tell you, next week is at the elementary reading, Read Across America Week is next week and that's our dome week. If you want to make that about football or basketball, it's our state jazz and it's our state basketball tournament all wrapped into one. So next week's a big deal at the elementary school. We have dress-up days every day. We have, you heard that, I haven't even seen this show, but they were talking on our committee, there's a guest singer or, what's that?
Author.
And what's the guest singer, like the Masked Singer? Isn't there a show?
Oh, Masked Singer, yeah.
So we're doing Mask Reader for the kids. We're showing on video and they get to try to guess who's reading. We are doing a guest, we have an author coming. Julia Cook is coming next week. So, yeah, that's really exciting. She's a children's author and she's staying the whole day and that night for parents. So she's coming. We have family game night next Thursday night. So it's, you know, next week's a big week for it. So it's like our little Super Bowl wrapped into one. Anyway, so if you're out and about and you want to see, we have an unbelievable turnout for our family reading night, which is next Thursday. So if you want to see a ton of people, that is a big night for us. So, of course, it's the same day after we win state basketball that we'd be playing that day. So.
45 or something. So look back.
It's okay. We can do both. We'll have to talk about that because we have our author booked.
I know.
So, anyway.
Yeah, anyway.
We, yeah, when you've got so many good things going on, it's hard not to have conflict, right?
It does, that's right.
Yep, so anyway, yeah, so that's the goings on at the elementary school.
Okay, Mr. Mueller, middle school here.
Yeah, that top left picture is Mr. James's eighth grade social studies class and he's, he's got a unit on the Electoral College voting procedure. And so he instructs that, but he takes the politics out of things. So like for instance, this year it was Batman versus Spider-Man. And so each classroom in the middle school has, based off of their enrollment, has different Electoral College votes that can, that get submitted. So then he talks about the popular vote and Electoral College vote and if you're Spider-Man one, both the popular vote and the Electoral College.
Of course. Sorry, man.
No way.
And right, to the right of that is our Students of the Quarter. So every quarter, a teacher gets to submit a student's name for hard work and just being a good classmate and respectful to others. And so those are recipients of Students of the Quarter from second quarter, from each, like I said, teacher gets to nominate a student. Down in the middle is Mrs. Schleimer runs our middle school library. And so each year, students can participate in the Iowa Children's Choice Award books. And so 13 of them will get chosen. And so she was running kind of a little contest there of having kids vote and then we would submit our vote as a school to state for that. And then on either side of that middle picture is our middle school girls' basketball team, Mr. Boyson over there on the left with our seventh graders, and then over on the right, Ms. Clayton and Mr. James with our eighth graders.
All right. And the eighth grade group went to Washington DC last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So that was fun. I got to be a part of that. That was a great trip and you are doing something every second. So, but the kids were, were awesome and we got lots of compliments on how good they were. So you couldn't miss this because we had orange, bright orange sweatshirts and we had nice orange hats too. So it was good. All right, Casey, let's see, high school.
So on the top left, the person on the left there, that's Jan Leonard and then Colby's standing next to her. Jan is our Avenue Scholars Career Coach. And so she was out at lunch just promoting Avenue Scholars and getting kids to sign up. Avenue Scholars is a scholarship program and also helps students selected to the program determine a potential career path. And then she kind of helps guide them, will take them on to job shadowing, et cetera, et cetera, just help them make those decisions. And then it also ends in a full ride scholarship to Iowa Western for two years and then additional two years of coaching after they finish with college. So we have 10 students or nine students this year who are Avenue Scholars and then we'll add another 10 plus next year. So she'll eventually have around 20 to 23 kids, whatever we, you know, we'll fill her up as much as they'll let us. And then, so she's here two days a week and meets with her, her kids for a weekly meeting and just is promoting them and working with them on keeping grades up, whatever barriers they have, just helping them. So she's been a great addition. On the right there, that's our senior girls signing their playing cards after their senior night. The bottom left is a group of us, actually I'm wearing the shirt. We got, we got just this Iowa, Iowa school shirt, so we all wore it on the same day. That was fun. The middle is our FFA, and I can't remember what that was. It was, they donated.
Nelson Farm Supply?
Yeah.
And Hubbard Feed donation.
To just, I think it was just a donation for the, to the FFA. Yeah. And then on the right is I.
Girls' wrestling tournament.
That's girls' wrestling, yep. I stopped by Atlantic and, and watched their girls' wrestling tournament for a little bit and then I went to state speech, or to district speech in Guthrie Center. And that is Colby wrestling. They saw me, they're like, "Mrs. Rain, what are you doing here? They said, 'Can't even watch you.' Wow." So it was just fun to see, so.
Awesome.
Awesome.
And then just at the district level, there's Kylie and Sarah Fink. And Sarah won an award at the, at the NEDA Foundation, or is it Iowa? She won an award.
NEDA.
NEDA, so Nebraska Tech Foundation, she, she won an award.
Just scroll down a little to see.
I think it does say.
There you go.
Oh, that's, that's, she did win an award, but this is them at the national in Texas. So they had a really good time there. They went to Austin and they learned lots of things and they always bring things back. So those two have been a great addition to our, to the district this year. We have, that's state, or Jazz Band, so we won an accomplishment that Anthony was talking about.
And they just texted me.
I'm not sure which one that is.
And the Harlan Jazz Experience placed first at districts and are now qualified for state Iowa Jazz Championships on April 7th.
Awesome.
Very cool.
Uh, that is our student section for one of the, when we did the game and the presentation for Mia. And then in the middle, we've got our show choir and just choir in general. And Wortburg College came. That was a very cool day for all of our students to be a part of that. And then again, on the right was our memorial for Mia at the, at the table at the game. So lots and lots of good stuff.
Can I mention the Day on the Hill table, please?
Oh, yeah.
There was a group of our mental health team was, had a table at the Day on the Hill at the State Capitol last Tuesday. They did a wonderful job and they had state legislators coming by and actually watching some of the videos of some of our, our team. It was very well done.
Yep. They did, they did a good job. So we did have lots of people come by and then we had, they had made QR, there was a QR code, so they talked to some students who had gotten some form of help, whether it's working with the counselor, working with a therapist, working with a teacher, and they gave their story. And so you could just listen to the two-minute video of the student. We had lots of students.
How many schools were selected to have a table?
There, there were maybe 20 total.
Yeah.
And it was different subjects. There was another one that had, that was showcasing their mental health. There were some STEM, there was, let's see, what else? Mostly STEM and mental health and that was about it. Yeah.
But being selected was.
Yes.
This was a nice thing.
Yes, we were.
They represented us well.
They did a very good job. Yeah. Good.
Very good. Well, we're ready to move on to E, action items. If everybody else is ready. So here we go. We'll start with action item E1, the Personnel Report.
Yep. We've got a resignation in the, or retirement in the room.
Oh.
You can't blame us. You're blaming us next year. Yeah, we do have made an offer on a middle school or a varsity softball coach. So we'll be updating you on that next month, but we have made an offer. We have also made an offer on like, well, most likely kindergarten. So right now we only have one opening down. Things change so quickly. You put something out and then it changes. So we have several teacher interviews scheduled this week in the elementary school and so hopefully we'll have that, both of those filled and report that next week or next month. We also have all of our classified staff full at this point. So we are doing great in terms of getting ahead of the game and our sort of staff too.
Is the teacher shortage easing up at all, do you think? Do you have any pulse on that?
I would say no. I mean, I think that we're getting, we're getting some good candidates.
Much earlier as well. We started, we started advertising much earlier.
Yes. And a lot of people, I feel like a lot of people want to come back to Harlan, so that is something that helps us a little bit. But I still feel like, you know, years ago, we would get a lot more candidates than we are.
Like 50 candidates and now we get 10. So.
And what do you think it is about Harlan that people want to come back? Roots?
Yeah, absolutely. Roots, good community, small community, tradition. I mean, I just think it's a great place to live and grow and raise kids and be part of.
Just look at the accolades we just went through.
Yeah.
That's part of it.
Yep.
I mean, talked to the legislature people this week. I'd say that that's top of mind for them too is, is teacher shortage and what they're, I think there'll be some interesting legislation that'll come up in the coming months that'll address some of these issues.
Some sketchy, but.
Just trying to make it a little easier for people to graduate with a degree in teaching, which I don't know if all of that's good news or not, but.
And the retention piece is just huge.
Retention is huge.
I always like to say that the most important thing we do is have good teachers, good kids and good teachers. That's what it's about. Any other discussion ideas? Otherwise, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Greg to approve the Personnel Report, seconded. Seconded by Al. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have the 2024-2025 school calendar on the table to discuss.
So I just, just to start, we, this is a ginormous puzzle and you can never please everyone. So we did send out a survey. It's about half and half. We did send out a survey, and you, you saw the results, and we, we shared the results with the staff as well. You know, asking, part of the puzzle is that you cannot start school until August 23rd or later. August 23rd is on a Friday, so that's a difficult day to start school. Lots of times, you only have half a day on that day. So we chose to start it on the 26th. And then you try to get the start date and the end date before Memorial Day, which is difficult sometimes. So you have to have a thousand and eighty hours for students, which you can play with a little bit, that's easier. The teacher contracts are a hundred and ninety days. So you have to, you have to figure that in as well. So this year's calendar is interesting because Christmas lands on a Wednesday, that 23rd is on a Friday. So we asked several questions to see if people were interested, and then we're just taking their votes, and, and we did what we could with that. There, there was other suggestions, but some of them we can't do, some of them we, we can do, or we can definitely consider for next year as well. It's just, once you move one piece, then it kind of disrupts a lot of other things. So if we could start a tad bit earlier, then it would, it would just be better. So there are two different bills in legislation right now that maybe suggests you could start the Tuesday after the end of the state fair instead of the hard date of the 23rd. That would help us. If that, if that does happen to pass, then we'll bring this calendar back to you because we'll move those days back, and teachers will want us to do that. So I did talk to Representative Holt about that, and he doesn't think that that will even get through funnel, like the next funnel, because he said the last time they did that, it was just, the tourism lobbying is huge, so. But maybe that's a happy medium between starting way too early in August and, and starting.
It's probably a decent amount of revenue for our state, too.
It absolutely is, yeah. So, but if we could even just start the Tuesday after the fair's over, then that would give us a little more.
But it's stuff you don't even think about. So like this year, conferences fell. The full day of the school day was Valentine's Day, and I was volunteering that day because it was mid-states coming and counting money. So kids are eating candy at eight AM because mid-states is there at eight fifteen. It's a friggin nightmare. So that we'll try to avoid maybe again, just.
Well, maybe you don't know about it until it happens, but.
Yes. That was a fun day.
Yeah, it might be safe.
One of the questions on the thing was why are conferences in November and not a little earlier?
Yeah.
It, is, what is the reasoning behind the placement of the conferences?
Well, so we start.
It's not close to the end of the nine, first nine weeks.
Part of that was, we asked if they wanted their comp day because, you know, they're working to like extra day. Most of the time, that comp day is that same week, so that Friday. But we did ask, because it was suggested, could we have the comp day before Thanksgiving? So we were trying to keep conferences a little bit closer to the comp day just because. So that's, that's honestly why we did it.
Because I know some schools even do it at midterms of the first nine weeks so that then they can get on academic issues earlier.
We are also hopeful that, I mean, I know I see Mr. Mueller, they send out kind of a D and an F list every two to three weeks, so the teachers are making. And power schools, so yes, but.
Face to face is.
It's very nice, yeah, yeah. So that's, we can definitely take that consideration next.
I just want, I was just asking.
No, no, that's a good point, good question, good question.
So are we building in snow days, or are we not now?
So the snow days are built in because people were asking about that. So they are built in, so it looks right now, the last day would be May 29th. But if you don't have any snow days, then it would be May 23rd.
But very, very few do we not ever have snow days.
Right.
Especially in the last five years. I mean, I just never remember not having, you know.
Or state days.
Yeah.
And also, yeah, state days.
I just think we, we should always try to keep, I would try to schedule it, so we're done.
But there is that legislation now that we can zoom if we get multiple.
So we have talked about virtual days, and that is, that's really pretty easy to do at the middle and the high school levels because they have their computers and they have Google classrooms, and you can kind of, and teachers.
No, I, I see that.
Where it becomes difficult is at the elementary. They don't have computers, and so you kind of have to predict. Like, do you send stuff home with them? If you think it's going to be a snow day tomorrow, or.
Oh, man.
So that's, but we definitely have talked about that, and we'll continue to talk about that because other districts are doing it. So how can we not lose days at the elementary? We just don't want to, it's, I mean, that's where they're, the biggest foundation is. So how do we make sure they're getting what they need at the elementary? So definitely, we, we'll continue to talk about that. Another thing that we talked about was the Monday after Easter. Do, you know, do we need Friday and Monday off? So could we consider that Monday after Easter? If we needed to make up a snow day, could we say that's a makeup and not at the end of the year?
That would be a better choice.
So we've talked about that, and, and definitely we could.
People travel, because they have families.
Oh.
So you know, it's.
True.
So we can.
Is testing later since we're getting out a little later?
We get, we get to determine, like, the testing window is, is a couple months long, and we can determine when we want it. So we definitely can, we will make it, yes. And lots of times, sometimes the middle and the high school do it a little bit earlier than, than the elementary. Then we choose to do it, yes.
Well, one thing you can be for sure about is someone won't be happy, but someone will.
We, yeah, there we go, Jade, yeah.
I like two weeks.
Yeah.
He doesn't.
No, and there were other people that said, why are we taking two weeks at Christmas? But it's really hard to come back. I mean, I don't know. We got lots of feedback that this year, people liked that they were, had a couple days before Christmas off. I don't know, it just depends on if you are going to travel or you're not going to travel, so. And next year's calendar will look different, yeah.
It's stressful.
It is. Well, but Catherine's worst nightmare.
It is. Do you make the calendar?
I didn't have any stress.
We put it together.
Worst nightmare. We have to make major changes right now.
Yes, that would be, yes.
So what about the DC trip? So they'll be, we'll have school during that period?
So they, I think, are going to go, yes, Tasha's still looking into that.
So it'll make it a little tough on.
Yep, so they, they would either go this week, Roger, like this 26th, 20th, so the 27th, 28th, which would mean they, they go one more day. Because this year, they, they had school on Wednesday, they got Thursday, Friday out, so. She's looking into that.
Any more discussion, or would someone like to make a motion on the school calendar?
So moved.
So moved by Jade.
Second.
Seconded by Jennifer.
Good job!
Right on top. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we have item three, the Audit Report. And I think since Brian is ill, and we're going to have Superintendent Barnett take over the audit.
Sure. So Brian tried to stop, he's not feeling well, and this is just a quick recap.
He's just making a point.
He put it in caps, too.
Yeah.
It's all everywhere.
Brian, do you know what that means?
Yes, he is yelling at us, so we told him, and he's like, I can read it here, so. Basically, I, I can just skim through these points just so we make sure that we're being transparent. And ultimately, we had a very, very good audit. The only thing we needed to adjust was a 1.7 student enrollment number difference. So there's a slight decrease in the general fund due to ESER spending. So ESER is, again, that COVID money that we got extra, and you had to spend it, you had to spend it by the summer, basically. So we have done a good job of expending that. Solvency ratio decreased. Well, otherwise, you got to give it, give it back, and so we don't want to give it back. Solvency ratio decreased from nineteen point six percent to eighteen point six. And again, that is partly because of the ESER dollars. The cash reserve levy is a levy we use, oh, let me read that again. So this was anticipated as our fund balances will limit the amount that we can cash reserve levy. The cash reserve levy is a levy that we use to replenish our balances caused by our special education and English learner deficits. So just the, the special education and, you know, money doesn't go against our spending authority. District's total net position increased by approximately $2 million during the fiscal year of 2023, and most of that was due to our capital projects funds, which was the bonds. District, or during fiscal year 2023, property taxes and unrestricted state grants account for seventy-four point four percent of our total revenues, and then the instructional support services expense accounts for ninety-one point nine percent. So that's most of our teacher pay and salaries. Revenues from the business type fund, so the nutrition fund, decreased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, expenditures increased because federal funding decreased. So we were getting lots of federal funding for free lunches, COVID money again. And then the expensive did increase because we did have some equipment replacement that we had to do, some ovens.
And food's more expensive.
And food's more expensive, yes, for sure.
A lot more.
In the individual fund analysis, the general fund net position decreased was anticipated with ESER funding, funding widening down. Capital project fund balance saw a sizable increase just due to our obligation bonds that we had issued. District did not operate, or did, I'm sorry, geez.
Easy.
Sorry, did operate with this total.
We emphasize not to, like, no.
Total certified budget as, as we had meant it. So we, we followed our budget, we did good. We're constantly monitoring the budget and making sure it stays in, in healthy fashion. We did have a slight decrease in enrollment, and future decisions will be made based on enrollment trends. Revenues from our SAVE funding were enough to service our revenue bond payments, and we assess a debt service levy to our, to service our general obligation bonds and debt service. We're in compliance for all our federal programs. There was no internal control deficiencies or instances of noncompliance, and no other findings were noted with an exception of just that certified enrollment audit adjustment, which was 1.7. So, and Brian's not here, but he's the total reason we're in such great shape that we are.
But can't it be weird when one starts here and then goes somewhere, like, we claim them for that year, and then they're?
That's what happens.
I assume that's how you get seven tenths of a student.
Right.
Well, you.
It's odd.
Any other, any other visualization you have?
And then sometimes they go to school for free because no one can claim them, right?
They're weighted, yeah, so they're weighted different, different ways. And you may miss one or accidentally have one on, and it's all based on how you code it, so, yes.
Got a couple things. One thing I, I would like to ask you to address is the declining enrollment. What do you feel about that for the future? Because that's a, that's a pretty big.
Yep, I think we're, I, I mean, it just depends on your kindergarten class, so Jeff, this year.
I'm working on it.
I know. But we, we declined by about ten students this year, and it just kind of ebbs and flows. It's not ten students coming to school in kindergarten. It's, we might have lost one, like Jade said, that went to, that their family moved, and then we might get two more that have come in. So, I mean, just this week, we've got two or three new open enrollment students that are coming in starting, you know, this week. And we have one that wants to go to an online school. So it just goes back and forth and back and forth. We definitely will look at those based on the teachers that we hire. So we've had three retirements, and then we'll look at the overall salary adjustments that we need to make because those that retired were more expensive teachers. We'll see who we hire, and then we'll, we'll base our decisions on that. And then if we need to make, if we need to make staffing cuts, we will basically do it that way. But we'll know by fall of next year if that needs to happen.
But I think it's important to note that, you know, when he came and spoke to us, overall rural regions are, you know, just having declining enrollment. It's not kids in our district wishing to go other places. So we're not open enrolling anybody new or more. In general, we're just not getting an influx of any, you know, people moving to this area right now.
New families to move in.
We still have a large amount of open enrollment.
Oh, we, we are higher on the open enrollment.
But I don't, but that's not why we're declining enrollment.
No, no, no.
Harlan's not growing as a whole.
As, yes, yes, the city.
So when Brian does his budgeting, does he look two, three, five, or seven, eight years out?
Yep, we have, we've got that all projected out, for sure.
Is there about that last year, didn't we?
Yep.
Is there somewhere you can see the percentages of open enrollment for school districts? Like, how many percent of our students open enroll versus?
It's on the state report card, so you can look, that's all public information, or on the Iowa Department of Ed website, which they've switched website, or they've switched companies, so it's difficult to search for things there. But the state report card, you can definitely see who, how many are rolled in and how many are enrolled out. And you can see all populations, special ed.
Can you see homeschool, too?
You can see homeschool, you can see special ed.
Okay.
Another question I had is, it says here, you're closely monitoring the uncertainty of state and local finances. Do you have any feel for that, what it looks like in the future?
So right now, we're waiting, and it, the, the state is supposed to tell us within the first thirty days of the legislative session what our SSA or our student supplemental aid will be, and it's passed that thirty days, and we haven't heard yet. We have heard it'll probably be about 2.5%, which basically, you know, you can negotiate, we'll negotiate with our union, and if you go to mediation, it's either 3% or the CPI, so the CPI stands for the inflation. Consumer Price Index, or the inflation number, which is higher than 3%. So we will most likely settle at 3%. So we are doing our budget for next year based on the 3% package that would include their insurance benefits and their salaries. So we're watching that closely, but we, we will, if that's what passes, we'll get only 2.5% and still have to give the 3% increase.
The Audit Report, any other thoughts or questions? Would someone like to make a motion on the Audit Report? Approval by Al. Seconded by Roger. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we move on to the item four, Train Contract Renewal for discussion.
This is something we've had before. Mike, there, our facilities, facilities manager has suggested, requested that we do this again. He can fix a lot of things, but train, train can come in and do, do more for us. So this is what we've kind of passed.
I think we maxed it out a year or two a year ago, and.
My last year, I met with them, it saves us some.
Last year, he really, he really spent a lot of time getting bids, and he was going one direction, and then he came back and was really, this was.
He changed, yep.
So he looked at it pretty thorough. On this, it said, it's for the next three years, if I understand this contract, is that correct? And then it says on one of the pages, it says high school and middle. But, well, I think it says elementary, high school. So I was wondering, is all three buildings, and the existing three buildings?
It's all three. Here it is, right here, Jen, is this what you're saying, elementary and then Harlan Community?
So all three existing buildings, it will cover, is that right?
Anything that is train, yeah.
Probably not, it shows three.
Three.
Will the, will the HVAC change when the?
Yep, some of the new stuff is.
Like, so you can hear in the van?
Or leave less.
I think theirs is one room, isn't the van room one room that gets a new one?
Yes, yes.
Because that is like a helicopter landing.
That's coming out, yes. Yes, yes.
And that's a good question, Jennifer, because in part, originally, they were going to replace the cooling tower, which was going to be really expensive, but they decided to, to maintain it for a number of years. Yet they felt we could save some money, I believe. That goes back a year ago, I believe.
So some of it will change, but some of it won't.
Well, the new building, I, I would say would be a new deal with somebody. I doubt if it's included in this, but in my mind, I think it's the three existing buildings, the elementary and then the two parts of the high school.
It is, yes.
I hope you won't have to do too much maintenance the first year after you go.
Right, right, yeah, good point. And it's about $7,000 a year. Is that the, the contract price, and then it's time and material to do work? Is that how they do that? I kind of forget how that all goes.
I'm not sure, Jen.
This is a service fee, it's on page seven, but I'm.
Yes, I, we sought to pay for that, yes, but they are, they're doing a service. They're doing all the inspections and everything. The reason we are getting it on the brand-new building is because that will be under warranty for so many years as well, too, so we're not going to pay for that.
So this amount is three years for those ones?
For those, yes.
Okay.
But if some of it gets replaced, then will that have a warranty on it that we won't need?
The chiller's not getting replaced, this is the high school.
It's getting updated, yeah. So, yeah, it'll still need.
But they'll still need to look at other things, you know, so they'll find one and we update it, but then they'll still have to do inspection.
That's a good question. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts on this heating and air conditioning system.
And when they tear into this, there might likely to find a few things.
I have to bet we have that contingency there.
Yeah, there will not be any air in the building this summer.
Oh.
So that's part of it. We won't have any air conditioning running through the high school this summer. Because, because the ceilings will be torn out and all of that, including the auditorium.
Oh, yeah, I did see that. But what do you do, I mean, what do you do?
We can't do it, yeah, yeah, there's nothing.
We'll save money right now.
There we go.
Good job!
Just think of the money.
Well, this one, this has a little ceiling.
Oh, yeah, this room is fine.
These were new, yeah.
That thing works great.
It does. You're either freezing or. It does. You're either freezing or squirting on.
What are you right now?
Any other questions or discussion on the train contract renewal? About $7,000 for those three years. It varies a little bit up and down.
I make a motion to approve the train contract.
Jade and seconded by?
I'll second.
Got it from Jen. Arcfeld on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next item is issuance, is item number five, issuance three, change order number four. And so we have this change order from De novo forbating construction. Maybe the superintendent could explain this.
Yes, they, there was a design. They didn't design it correctly. So they put it down as an extra, not an extra, but a option. And it's not an option. It's a has to have. So we need to change that. So we had to add a double door opening.
Where is this?
This is at the high school. So it was just designed incorrectly.
I'm sure it wasn't. This is issuance designed incorrectly.
I was gonna say.
Issue is three.
I was wondering if that would be on the new intermediate building since this is the issue.
It's three.
I think it could be.
Okay, so it's on the intermediate building.
The new intermediate building. And I was wondering, did they, did they go for the single door or a double door? Or they have to put a whole new entry in?
I think it has to do with some of the safety pieces that we've been talking about as well. So.
I know you're at a disadvantage just probably from Brian's stuff with De novo.
I'm looking here.
Sorry about that.
I think, I'm almost positive that has to do with the safety pieces too. So we've done a lot of safety talks and especially since the Perry's safety piece. So it has to be a different door. So here it is, Jim. Narrow hollow metal doors, a thermal break, continuous hinges.
Basically, it's opening more than anything. Is that correct?
And we also. We didn't have the correct wiring to it too. So there's just card readers and there's different things that weren't. We switched that up a little bit. So.
It actually looked like the same size opening, but now going from a single door to a double door. That's what it looked like. Oh, maybe not.
Pair of three.
No, you can't be far off because they, they switched from a steel beam to basically a concrete.
Right.
Rotten, rebar reinforced beam, which actually lowered that in the header price.
But what did they say about the fact that if it was designed incorrectly? Are they standing some of that?
Well, I think it was an option, if I understood.
It was an option and.
They knew the possibility, maybe. I'm kind of guessing.
When they, when they should have switched it when they, when we approved the bids. Yes, we should have switched it when we approved the bids.
If the state fire marshal said that you can't have the option, I don't know what initiated it, but somewhere along the line.
I don't know how many change orders are standard in a construction project this size. They've been fairly minimal, in my opinion. So I, I mean, I've ragged quite a bit on some of it being designed out of our budget, which that, we'll leave that there. But I don't think that they've tried to be difficult in some of it, I guess.
Well, that's a good point.
Thank you so much. Glad you thought so.
I gotta get my lips in.
I'm glad you thought so.
Any other discussion on the change order out here? Otherwise, we'll take a motion for it, please.
So moved.
So moved by Greg to accept this change order number four and seconded by Jade. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we have the item six, policy review schedule, first reading. And so we have policies from 704.04 down to 706.02 in this first reading. Open it up for discussion.
Nothing super fun in these ones.
This was short and easy.
It looked pretty basic.
Right? The only thing I got clarity on is if your wages are garnished for a reason, then they can be garnished now.
If we get a request to garnish wages?
Yes, yes. Which does every employer, federal employer, have to comply with that, I assume?
I would think so.
Very good.
Okay, make a motion to approve them.
Okay, we got a motion from Jade to approve the first reading. And second?
Second.
Second from Roger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we have, I guess, let's see, make sure this right, policy review schedule, second reading, item number seven. And this one goes from, let's see, do I got the right one here? Yep, from policy 502.07 all the way down to regulation 713R1.
My only question in this is in the draft on the smoking and that sort of thing. Does that include vaping?
Yes.
It does, okay. Just making sure.
Good question.
Should it be stated?
No, it doesn't. So I don't know.
It doesn't state it. State that, I don't think.
No, it just.
Vaping is not smoking.
It says tobacco.
Tobacco is, yeah.
Okay.
It's all vaping.
Included.
I don't know.
It's got nicotine in it, but it doesn't, and it says nicotine in it.
Okay.
So it does have nicotine.
They tried to keep that pretty broad because there's so many ways you can do that.
Smoke and.
I just want, because that's a big thing these days.
Nicotine.
I'm gonna guess in the future, years, we're gonna see that.
Snuff. I mean, how many ways can you ingest nicotine?
A few.
Put a patch on.
Have you seen in some of the other schools, they have vapes, censors?
Yeah, Casey's researched some of that.
Are they expensive?
They're expensive and I can't get a very good answer that they're effective. Like I talked with the Iowa Tobacco Prevention Control, they're actually coming this Friday for a vaping presentation for the high school students. And they don't recommend that we have them. They said put more of your time and effort into prevention than trying to catch them. It could be more, more of a negative connotation if we're just running around and reactively catching kids, but.
Which rightfully so. It's negative, so don't do it.
Right now, I don't feel like our cameras are set up because all it does is detect it. It doesn't tell you who's doing it. So you have to be able to have that. It'll go off and then you have to look at your cameras and see who's running out of the bathroom. And then go catch them all and talk to them. So that sounds like fun.
Another full-time job listing.
Right.
Is that your job?
Yeah, yeah. That requires a, somebody on duty at the restroom.
You shovel that much?
So we are getting new cameras and it'll be, they'll be better situated outside bathrooms. You can see better.
If it senses, it locks it. Then you get notified and you go on market.
Especially once these get renovated. Because these are gonna be what the 95% of our public sees from this bond. So we'll have to do something so that doesn't smell like vape, which I don't know what vape smells like.
But will they be open? I don't think you can smell vape.
I don't.
I know.
Yeah, you can.
Can you?
Yes, you can.
Sometimes it's vanilla, sometimes it's.
Oh, true, right.
Jennifer's probably never been to a concert where you smell something in the air. And you're like, oh, that's something.
If kids vape in the car, it ends up.
Stinking.
The car, you could tell it or vape in there.
Good to know.
I'm just glad you and I grew up and we're all so innocent.
Yes, I agree.
I almost got that out of the straight.
Cigarettes, you could smell those.
Or bitter.
Very good.
Great, good, good talks, everyone.
Good talking.
I'm learning here though. I didn't actually know. How about a motion to approve this second reading on the policy review schedule?
Yes, absolutely.
So moved by Jen, by.
You were so close.
Seconded by Roger plus. Okay, next, we're moving on to item number eight. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next, we'll move on to item eight, first and second reading of purchasing. So this says bidding and it goes from seven. 0521 to 705.01R2.
So the reason that we have this is because we have a, so the safety grant is a federal grant and that's what we're using to pay for part of the middle school vestibule. And we have a person assigned to us who's, she's from like Louisiana. And she's looked over everything and there's lots of boxes that you have to check because it's a federal grant. So we need these policies in there to even move forward with anything, to even get bids or move forward with anything. So that's the only reason we're asking if you could do first and second reading at the same time. Normally, we would not do that. But these are, we have to get these in, yeah.
So they're being, the policies being added to our policy manual?
Well, they're just being, just updated, Jade.
Okay. Yeah, the R2 is being added.
Right here.
R2 is being added.
And this follows exactly what they've asked us to do on it for the federal grant piece. And we have some of this already in there, but not all of it.
Does this have to do with Davis Bacon wages, I suspect?
Has to do with the federal grant.
Yeah, it says it right in there. Davis Bacon is something, a little bit further down, but yeah.
Everybody familiar with that?
Sadly not.
If you do a government, if the government funds go into it, you have to pay what the government schedule says for wages. And so sometimes you might be paying.
So we'll struggle getting bids for this, is what you're saying?
Well, for the contractor.
I'm kidding.
No, we'll get them because.
I wasn't picking up your sarcasm.
All the contractors have to send in their stubs to show that they've paid up to a certain rate. You know, normally that rate might be $20 an hour, but if the government says a plumber should get $30 an hour, you have to raise their wages and you say, well, it's Christmas workers. And so that's Davis.
It refers to?
Oh, yes, it does, yes. You follow their schedule.
I kind of had an idea.
Because I've been there.
As he says with a smile.
I'm generally not a fan of doing first and second readings. I think this, I think the case has been made that it makes sense here for this.
Oh, that's a good point. Because this is a little different.
This is the first time we've ever done it since I've been here.
Yeah.
So that we can get the bids out, right?
Get the bids out, yeah.
Okay, how about a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Al, seconded by Greg. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. And so next, we move to item nine, the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I did notice on here that there was quite a few of the, let's see, open enrollment, a little over 100,000. But I take it you're ready, I take it we, the pluses is more than the negatives.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just about that time.
Do you know the numbers? What do we have in, plus is out?
That's what I was gonna ask Jade.
I can look that up real quick. I don't know. It changes all the time.
Does it?
I thought they had made a schedule.
They used to have to, but now, now you can open enroll at any time. That is another piece of legislation that's in.
No wonder we're .7 people off. That's right.
And it's a nightmare on the billing side of things. Because usually you knew, like you just billed for a whole year or, so now you just bill back and forth and back and forth. It's, I could put those, do you want me to put those in your Friday?
Yeah, I'm curious.
I'll put those in Friday notes. Yep.
That'd be just fun to know, maybe even some of the school districts.
And what?
Oh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I don't think the detail is in our financials on the, they put the detail of the expense in there, but they're not putting the detail of the deposits. So we don't know where that's coming from.
Yep, they jump.
And what grades maybe? I'm curious about that. Do we get more in younger grades or higher?
I would say higher. Well, if they're younger, they usually come right away in kindergarten and they stay. And then, yep, yep, and, yep.
But like today, just got one or two from Atlantic.
I would imagine you can open roll more easily when your kid can drive.
Right.
Drive to, so I would imagine.
Well, because they're obviously not gonna get bus.
They can't get bus.
I'm just curious.
Does that change the, well, I guess that would be on a school permit. Like on your school permit, you can only go 50 miles out of your district. 50, 50, but how far is Atlantic?
That's a long way.
Oh, it is.
You wouldn't let your kids go? True, but you don't even care.
We do have some, like if they work in Harlan, they work in Harlan, so they'll.
They'll charge out.
They'll bring their kids, yeah.
It'd also be nice to know, an idea why, you know, some of them might be for sports, some of them.
I don't know that, but.
Probably just have to guess on.
Speculation, probably.
That would be a lot of speculation.
Maybe.
Brief study.
And why we have people open and roll out, that also.
Yes, we always ask, you know, when they do come in, if they are gonna open and roll out, you know, what is it that? What's the reason?
Know both ways why they're coming and why they're going.
Sure. Well, that's the only way. If there is a problem, especially in rolling, if they're going out, if there's a pattern.
To find a correlation.
Yeah, to find a correlation. If there's a pattern, then you can maybe address that.
Mainly the principals, I've heard.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
How about a motion on the consent agenda?
So Casey under the bus, she's not even answering.
Yeah, we need to just definitely.
It's definitely Casey.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I would.
On the consent agenda. We got that from Roger.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Oh, the next item, we got one more item left on here on the back of the page on mine, and that's the adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by Jade and seconded. Second, we got Greg on that. All those in favor adjourning the meeting, say aye. No.
You're not in favor. You can stay here, bye.